Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassas Common Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have a roll, please.
Alderman Kruger.
Here.
Alderman Tom Grotty.
Here.
Alderman Ted Grotty.
Here.
Alderman Repella.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Sevenick.
Here.
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing. We have two rezoning and a special use permit. The rezoning has been withdrawn, but Director Schrader, if you'd like to give us a little background on both, and then we'll open up the floor for anyone who wishes to speak on them.
Yeah, so I guess first and foremost, again, the rezoning was to rezone a single-family lot off of Appleton Street from single-family to two-family, and the developer was hoping to build a duplex following Plan Commission. At the last Plan Commission meeting, that developer did decide, based upon public comment, that that was not what the neighborhood was wanting in that area, so he did withdraw that application, which did fit with staff's recommendation. So the other public hearing tonight is a special use permit for that same developer, who currently owns two lots off of Racine Road. So again, this is kind of just north of where the former PDQ was, to actually combine those two lots and construct a fourplex. So I believe there was a rendering within your packet, so this property is Zone C1, general commercial, which any multifamily use does require a special use permit. So the Plan Commission and staff did review this and did recommend approval of the special use permit as presented, allowing the multifamily residential structure, finding that the proposed use does not have a negative impact on the comprehensive plan or the general welfare of the community and surrounding lands with the following condition, that the CSM with that for 1147 and 1151 Racine Road is approved, and that CSM is a part of the Plan Commission consent agenda later on the agenda.
So with that, if there's anyone from the public who wishes to comment on either of those, you could step to the podium now and give us your name and address, and we'd be happy to hear from you. Seeing no one, we'll call the public hearings to a close, and we'll move on to the report of department heads. Oh, you got one? Sorry, I didn't see you stand up back there.
Hi, my name is Robert Smith. My address is 1234 Appleton Street. And I own a property that's next to these and behind these properties. I know, I'm happy that he redraw for having a duplex put in next to us, which I appreciate. But I'm still thinking, I don't know what you guys feel, but how many of you people would like a fourplex shoved down your throat into your backyard? We've all, it's all single-family down there. It has been for 30 years I've lived there. It's all residential. I mean, I just don't see where the parking's gonna be for this residential, and they say they got enough room, but what, it's gonna be like 10 yards, 10 feet off the fence line? We're gonna have a parking lot? I mean, I don't know where you guys live, but I don't want that in my backyard. We got a school right down there, and he's got a property next door, which was an old, which is considered what it actually is in the Fox Crossing. He took his old woodworking building, and he's putting one-room apartments in these things. And he's got a warehouse on the back, big warehouse, where he plans on running his equipment out. He's got Bobcats, he got unloaders, he's got everything parked all over the place. He's got a school two blocks away, not even two blocks away from this, and there's gonna be like a Motel 6 there. And you know what you get with one-room apartments. I mean, I don't mean to say anything, but this is all residential. As far as, you can go past anywhere, all the way down Racine Street, and it's all R1. It's all residential houses, all owned back by us is all residential houses. I don't think we need a fourplex there. I mean, it's gonna hurt probably, I mean, are you gonna come back and rezone all, appraise all our properties? When this stuff goes in here and that place in the town of, or Fox Crossing? I mean, I don't know how he got that passed, but he got it passed, but, I mean, where are all these cars gonna park? And I just don't see it. So I hope you guys turn this down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. Dan Talbot, 1237 Appleton Street. I've been neighbors with the Smiths, Bob just talked. The lot that has been under scrutiny as far as the two-family dwelling and the withdrawal thereof is much appreciated, as Bob had indicated. I'm a 38-year resident of that neighborhood. All homes in that area are R1, single-family homes. And I agree 100% with what Bob said. To put in rental properties on top of these other rental properties that are going forward cannot be considered to be advantageous to us homeowners, that can only depreciate the value of our homes. It wasn't intended as such originally, and here we are, many, many years later, and changing up the rules, or at least considering thereof. So I, as a taxpayer in Manassas and a owner-occupied dwelling in that neighborhood, I'm against the rezoning option. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. Melissa Sutner, 1230 Appleton Street. I agree with basically what everybody was saying. Thank you so much for not having the duplex being built. It is a single-family dwelling around there. It has been like that for a very long time, and as Mr. Smith and Mr. Talbot also said, we have children that are just down the road from the school. And to have a fourplex like that with, sad to say, there could be a lot of riffraff. And it's already a single family, and we'd like to keep it that way as much as possible. And if you start thinking about things like that, that, okay, you've got riffraff coming, where are they gonna be parking? Are they gonna be parking also on the Appleton Street around the curve? We have enough traffic kind of coming through there already. And you start thinking about with the children, and there's a lot of children that come from that Gigan School that do walk down there. We got cars passing by and stuff. And so I'm just kind of worried about, yes, the children with the school, but also the riffraff and things like that that are happening, because it has been a single family. Everybody takes really good care and very good pride in everything. And so I would definitely like to not have that fourplex also, so please reconsider that for the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Okay, seeing no one else, we'll call the public hearing to a close, and we'll move on to the report of department heads, staff and consultants. The first item is a presentation from the Fox Cities Marathon, and we have Tara Perrier here and Scott Stilo.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'm representing the marathon, and Scott is one of our volunteer board of director members, and so we're really excited to be here, thankful that you have given us this time. The city of Manassas is really, really important to the marathon. I hope all of you know that we treasure the partnership with the city and especially the police department. So, I don't know, Chief, if you might wanna come up here so we can do a little doling out of a gift as a token of our appreciation. So as you know, we start the marathon in Manassas. We literally run through Manassas. You're just a really important community along our route. Your residents are wonderful to our participants. Many of your residents volunteer. Many of the businesses support us. And of course, the police keep everyone safe, and they're that really friendly, welcoming presence as our runners come into Manassas. So as a token of our appreciation, we have a $500 donation that we'd like to give to the police department. Unless Scott wants to add anything, I think we're good. So thank you so much for having us.
Do you appreciate the partnership as well?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming this evening. Alderman Sevenick.
Thank you, Mayor. As you indicated, we are going to change up our agenda this evening so that individuals who are here to give a presentation will be able to get that opportunity. That way, those who are here in the public can also see what's going to be happening here, potentially in the city of Manassas. If that's okay with the rest of the council members.
So if there's no objection, we'd like to move up the Brin area development to the beginning of the agenda? And we do have Grant Fisk here, and Adam, and Kip, and Amy. I'm not sure who's leading the show.
We have.
Adam's trying to wrangle technology. Oh, there you go. Well done. It's under I for. We're gonna need you to use the mic, though, Amy.
So if I wander...
Do you wanna handheld one?
Yes. If I could have a handheld one, that would be good, 'cause we're gonna pull some stuff up on the screen, and I don't wanna stand in front of you.
I'm sorry for standing in front of you. Good evening. I'm Amy James. I'm with Vision Architecture. We are the architecture firm who's been tasked with coming up with these beautiful renderings you're gonna see tonight of what could potentially be in downtown Manassas. This is Adam. He is our lead architect and also our key person in getting our technology up and running here tonight, along with our team. No pressure, Adam. Along with that, we have Grant Fisk, who is representing the development group on this project, and Kip Golden, who is here as part of our construction team with CR Structures. We can come up with great ideas all day long, but unless you can build the dream, it's no good to you, has Manassas. Yeah, the computer definitely makes it more exciting, but I'll just keep rolling so, in the sake of time. Well, we made a beautiful video that on his older computer, it kind of outweighed its capacity, so it's time for Santa to bring a new computer, I think, to Vision Architecture. But the good news is, there's no better time to be you, sitting in your shoes. When I think of Manassas' history, I can think of a lot of times where I would think, gosh, I really wouldn't wanna be a council member right now, or it might be tough to move forward with decisions. But right now, you're faced with a beautiful city and a unique opportunity to redevelop some key areas, particularly in your downtown, to celebrate the future of Manassas. And that's a really good place to be if you're in a decision-making place, or if you're city staff, or if you're a resident, knowing that there's some exciting things to come for your community. So tonight, we're gonna review the opportunity that is knocking currently with what you may know as the former Brin Theater site. We're gonna review the development proposal that we have and look at the renderings we've created of what we think it could look like and how it could operate. And then we're gonna talk about land acquisition and timeline. So for us reviewing what is about to happen, it's really exciting to think about all the people that can come with this development and the connectivity it can bring between the trail and the downtown, which, if you remember me from being here last time, I was probably talking about Loop the Lake. And so it's exciting for me to change roles and really work with you as a community on developing some neat projects for your community. A lot of other communities are looking at you, not just because of this particular opportunity and how you react to it, but all that it can bring with this opportunity. So be mindful of that as you move forward. People are looking at Manassas and wondering, is it a supportive process to bring new development here? Are you excited about it? Are you doing things in the interest of valuable time and saving people money? Not in incentives and contributions always, but just in process that can do work wonders. And quite frankly, you know, we work in a lot of different communities, and there are a few communities that are getting it kind of wrong in that respect. So it's important to be mindful of getting that process right and celebrating development and celebrating the exciting things to come for your community, because it can bring more. And so I know we've worked on a few different projects in the area, and there are people really looking at you now. They're looking at the fact you have a river running through your downtown, and it's really an amazing space to be in. Were you gonna say something?
I was just gonna say you're doing a really good job stretching.
Yeah, I'm trying. I'm working it hard. I have no pretty pictures to show you right now.
We would've had the same problem a few minutes later, probably, but...
You have high security here, is that what I mean? It's great.
It's good that we got Sam a new computer a few months back. Hey!
Well, that's something. Hey, look, that's where I talked. I'm on like slide three now, so I'm almost done. Pass that. Here we go. The site. So Main and Taco Street. We are proposing a new three-story mixed-use building that is 8,148 square feet of commercial space. There are 16,296 square feet of residential space that equates to 16 apartments. That is, would you like to point out that building? Yes, thank you. You're my new pointer. That's that building. And then we are also proposing a new four-story residential building that is 30,752 square feet and 30 apartments. And then in Phase Two, and something we won't talk a lot about today, is another building that is about 3,000 square feet for future use. All in all, this area encompasses 55 surface stalls for parking, 40 covered stalls, and a total of 95 parking stalls overall, which really helps all of downtown. We are looking at adding bike parking as an amenity to the site as well, some interactive art and community gathering spaces, a new roadway connection with Center Street that makes that a more meaningful connection, and then the never sexy but always important trash enclosure, so that we check that box as well. So what was once known as the Brin Theater Building, starting in 1928, would now be known as the Brin, 'cause if there's anything I know about community, is no matter what you name this space, they're gonna call it the Brin for all of time, so we might as well embrace that and refresh it as a marketing strategy for this space in the future.
Yeah, I didn't realize that we designed gravestones. I promise you, at 2 o'clock today, we had this flyby video with music set to it, so you're gonna have to come to our office and see that, 'cause it was really cool.
This better be worth the wait, right?
Adam also sings and plays guitar. If we could request his entertainment in the interlude.
Does your computer hate you right now?
I know, you know, my computer's...
Yeah, this is Sam's computer. This is...
Oh?
It's still not happy, huh?
Do you want me to unplug you so you can go through files?
It's giving me such a hard time here. All right, well...
It's like generally speaking is...
These are gonna be a little out of order, 'cause I'm just gonna run with what we have here, just to try to keep this thing going.
Adam, do you wanna kind of pull the mic a little bit closer to you?
Yeah, sure can. Okay, so, actually, let me do this. I'm gonna go to, let me go to the beginning, so it makes a little more sense. So our first view of this, this is if you're on the bridge, coming from Mina into Manassas. You can see the existing tower there at the bridge, and then that little retaining wall that continues down, that's the connection to the trail. So what you're seeing in this view is the four-story building that happens for the south, and then continuing on, there's a little gap there, and then the three-story building next to that. What we did with the architecture on this thing is we wanted to try to do something that had some classical details, but kind of reinvented them in a new way. So the building looks fresh, it looks new, but it ties in classically to what you already have in downtown. So there's some elements as we go through this that you'll see sort of hit that mark. On this four-story building, what we did is we pulled, there's a little bit of grade change on that site, so we pulled the parking down into that grade, so it creates a first floor of the building that's about four or five feet above the grade level. So any apartments that are on that level, kind of above people's eye lines, so when you're walking along the sidewalk, you're not looking, you know, directly into people's windows. It also gives us a neat opportunity to do some walk-ups along that side. So if you have an apartment on first floor, you can come right from Taco and walk up into your space. You also would have access to the underground parking through the center hallway, so those will be kind of neat units. As you go up on the building, we grabbed that brick and we tried to create some really nice finishes and nice materials here, and then, it doesn't show up real well in this view, but we also took some cues from the Brin. And if you remember that building, they had some really nice brickwork along the cornices, and they did some stepping and some neat things there. So we're trying to incorporate some of those details, again, just in a newer way. We're very much about art and trying to do things unique and interesting and making buildings more than just about a building. So you'll see on this as we spin it around and look at it, there's little opportunities to make this a really unique and really interesting building. For instance, on this view, you see those vertical blue pieces there. The idea is that, you know, we're surrounded by water in Manassas, so let's try to pull something that references the water on here. So those are, you know, like a translucent blue glass that has some scalloping to them. So as you're driving down Taco, you see the side profile of those, and they kind of represent ripples, you know, in a river. As you turn and look at the building, they kind of disappear because you're looking at the edge fin of that. So just kind of a neat and interesting detail to consider. I'm not doing good here, guys. I'm so sorry. Now we continue further down Taco, and this is the intersection of Main and Taco. The Brin had a really nice front piece on it, had, you know, just a real kind of memorable entry element. So we didn't necessarily wanna copy that, but we thought we needed to do something on this corner to really make a statement. So Amy and I came up with this detail. Again, there's, you know, some of the neat brick detailing across the top, but then we introduced something a little more modern and interesting with the window layouts up there. There's a, it's hard to see in this view, but there's a marquee sign on this, again, taking cues from the Brin, but doing that marquee sign in a little bit more interesting and modern way. There's a funny little structural element in the corner there. This is an opportunity, I think, to engage public in this building and this development. We're thinking that that may be an opportunity to create kind of a mini amphitheater, so, or a mini kind of activity zone, so if you've got an acoustic guitar player, if you got an artist, or you got somebody that wants to do just a little performance there, it's kind of a neat spot to do it. Also, the, you know, the art, the rotating sculptures and things that the city does, it's a great place to display those as well. So then those glass fins kind of continue around, and this building here is where we have first-floor commercial use, so it could be retail, it could be restaurants, it could be more service businesses, those kind of things, and then two floors of apartments above that. And as we continue down Main Street, that's the facade there. And as we wrap around, now there's an existing access point coming off of Main Street into the site. That's kind of where that blue car is, we're keeping that. But if you saw in the site plan, we're reconfiguring that. Instead of just doing a straight path to Center Street back there, we did a little S-curve in there. Couple things, it's, one, it's way more attractive, we can line it with trees and make it nice, but two, I think it's gonna slow traffic down too, so that you don't have people, you know, screaming from one end to the other. So we thought that was important. We're trying to really pick up on that Brin namesake, so as you approach this building from either direction, you've got that logo and that signage. It's a great reference, you know, if your business is in there, if you live there, you can just refer to it as the Brin. So as we go into that curved driveway, this is the, we'll call this the backside, and here we incorporated balconies, things to take advantage of that view up and down the river, you know, and just kind of give you some outdoor spaces. Again, you don't probably want those on Taco, busy streets, so we put those on the back here. And the retail and office and commercial spaces also would have access on this side as well. So this would be the view from the river, so you can see the trail down there, and then you're looking back up at the building. On this side of the building, similar to Marina Place, we have a third-floor patio up there, so that's something for the residents to enjoy, be some furniture and things up Another kind of neat community aspect here, we created this little skywalk in here, and what it ends up doing is creating this neat little alley space in here. So it's an opportunity, again, you could program events, it's a neat connection, and as we think about future developments, it's kind of a nice pedestrian path through that space. And so we're toying around with some ideas of, you know, everybody in their little alleys does the string lights, so we were thinking, well, let's do something a little more modern and cool, so we did this installation of LED strips that are, you know, color-changing and, you know, could create a really neat mood and a neat aesthetic in that little space. Plus, it gives us an opportunity to put some Manassas stuff in there, you know, we can put some, that's what we're showing on the wall, there's some photos of the old Brin, and we put a little celebration about that building and what it used to be. We could put maps, we could put trail stuff, we could put events, you know, community things that could be advertised in that space. On the other side of that, there's an access point for residents to get up in the elevator to go to their apartment. Another view of that, and just some views along the sidewalk here. Looks like we leveled the rest of Manassas, but we did not, sorry. We will respect the rest of Manassas in here. But the intent is really just to create a really engaging community asset here. On this side... On this side, we're showing some bike parking there. We'll obviously want to incorporate that in because it's, you know, with the trail and all the connections that we're trying to create, that's gonna be an important piece. The back of the building, we've got some raised planters and things going on back there just to soften it up and make it a place that doesn't feel like a big asphalt parking lot. That's it. That's what I wanted to talk about. Any open up for questions or comments?
I can say one more, one more thing. Sorry. When we purchased 140 Main back in May, we were talking about it's time to start to showcase Manassia a little bit more. And thankfully, I shouldn't say thankfully, because of the community's response to 140, 140 is full. It is under construction, but the entire building is pre-leased. And now we're, now we determined it's time to figure out how are we going to showcase the rest of the city? How, now that we're starting to bring more life into downtown, how are we going to showcase downtown? How are we gonna get people excited about, they come into downtown and they're going to look at this and say, "Oh, my God, this is amazing. This is what Manassia's been missing. This is what they've been needing." So it's time to showcase downtown and time to create that grand entrance into downtown Manassia on Taco Street. And that's the goal with this, is to start to showcase the city properly, to show new development, a lot more life and bring a lot more bodies into downtown Manassia. So that's the goal of this project. And again, this is still, this is just step two with more coming. Does anyone have any questions?
Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you, Mayor. As you might or may not know, for the past year and a half now, we have been working very hard on Water Street. And we're wondering, or at least I am, if you've had some type of connection along with community development incorporating both of those things? Because really, this has now gone backwards. Before, we were kind of hoping to get the Water Street going to get something like this going. But now that we have this potentially happening, I believe Water Street then can be a hidden gem in downtown Manassia. So what have you been doing and looking at that to incorporate this? And one of the issues we had was the cross, the cross. I know Tom Grady suggested, because underneath, a lot of people don't know this, that there's actually a tunnel system underneath there. So there's a possibility of something there, but I'll let you talk.
Yeah.
So we have talked a lot about that. When you talk about trail connection and connectivity to water with a new development, it's important to consider, how can you get people across safely from the trail into your downtown? So we were looking at different crosswalk options. We put one here arbitrarily to, for discussion's sake, so that we wouldn't lose sight of the fact that you do need to connect to Water Street and connect to the trail and move traffic in a safe way at that location. So I'm not saying we landed on the best place for a crosswalk. That's really up for you guys to discuss and decide, but we are definitely thinking about it. And, you know, we talked briefly about some more creative ways to do a crosswalk. I mean, you can do a crosswalk or you can do a colorful crosswalk or you can do a lot of different things. So I think this poses an opportunity, not just for this development, but really for Water Street as well and for future development on that site in between. And looking ahead to your future, that's where I say, you know, it's good to be in Manassia right now and look ahead and think about things like, how are we moving cyclists through our community in a safe way? Where are they parking when they get downtown so they're not propping bikes up against the commercial windows? That's a common problem. So we want to be thinking about all of these things and incorporate that as many as we can. So that was one thing we did address.
And if we can move forward with this project, then there's no reason now the council shouldn't go full speed ahead with Water Street. Before, Water Street was a great idea, a plan. I mean, most of us here attended every single meeting. We spent hours and hours, got the community involved big time. It was probably one of the most involved community activities I've seen in my time up here on the council. Those people are very interested. It has a lot of potential. And really, again, I'll just emphasize, if we would have done all that, what good is it if there's nothing really to go to?
Right.
Now you got something to go to. So thank you.
Just a point of interest for the rest of you on the council. We did, through Public Works, apply for a DOT grant for the Water Street corridor for the plan that Stan's talking about. So we'll find out in the next couple of months, I think, that when, if they chose one of those projects for us as well. Alderman Krueger.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a question, it's more of comments, so please bear with me. I mean, I was very excited when your group took over the old City Hall and was gonna invest money. This is really exciting. This is absolutely phenomenal because this is the type of development that the city has always needed. That's not just gonna spur growth, but it's gonna spur activity, which is also heavily needed. It's a, it's a great plan. This is the type of stuff you see on the East Coast, all over the place, and it does wonders. This is a very good plan and I'm gonna say it's a great job. Thank you very much for even considering utilizing that BRIN area. I mean, you guys are doing a fantastic job. And the city should be supporting it full-heartedly on this one because this, out of all the developments I've ever seen, this is the thing that's gonna bring people in, bring activities in, and it's gonna create a big spur downtown. So thank you.
Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thanks for bringing this project forth to us. I love the setbacks. I love that we're finally pointing up to the waterfront and utilizing being right on the waterfront, which is really important and the purpose of it, instead of having a street separate us there. So your campus on the waterfront is phenomenal. And I do like the pieces, the architectural work in the front. And I like how you're trying to create different spaces for this, for the community and for the people that live there. So absolutely wonderful project. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Gentlemen, it looks very nice. Sure beats storage garages and car washes, which we've had lots of built in the city. Your apartments, are those, I guess, what's the, what's the average rent that you're kind of looking for, for those places?
We haven't come to an absolute final rental rate yet. We are going to try to hit two or three kind of rates, though, to make sure we are able to provide as much housing as possible. But we don't have a final rental rate determined yet for any of the units. But it is going to be within market rate. So, yeah, they're not gonna be low income or tax-grade housing. They're all going to be market rate with two or three different, I believe there's three unit types?
Yeah.
Three unit types. So there will be three different rental rates available.
So as far as like two bedrooms or three bedrooms or?
There's some one-bedroom and some two-bedroom and some, and some three?
We're, yeah, we just need to decide what the right proportions of that.
Yeah.
Okay. No pool at the roof? No pool on the roof? Okay. Throwing it out there. Okay. Maybe a hot tub. Okay, hot tub's a good idea. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Good job.
Alderman Grady.
Thanks, Mayor. I too want to thank you. I think this is a wonderful project for our future. And I want to commend you for bringing in the elements of the past to bring us forward into the future. They always say your past brings you to your future and things. So I like the elements and the concepts of elements of the BRIN, architectural elements, all that. It's wonderful. Thank you. Finally.
Alderman Taylor.
I just wanted, I forgot to say about something we told Mr. Schrader when he first got here. Don't bring us these developments with all these flat parking lots. So I really appreciate that we have, I think, 42 stalls underground. And that's really important for a project like this and especially living in Wisconsin. So I really appreciate that element in this project.
So when Director Schrader and I talked with the developers the first time, I think a couple of things that we brought about was, one, we wanted this to be walkable so you could walk out your front door and feel part of the community. Think you've delivered on that. And the other was, we didn't want it to be in the middle of a sea of a parking lot, like Alderman Taylor is saying. And you've definitely delivered on creating that underground parking, but also the parking that's there feels like a street. So it doesn't look, feel like, oh, I'm looking out over a parking lot. It feels like I'm looking out over a neighborhood. So I think you guys have really delivered on making a nice urban building that people feel as part of the community rather than something that kind of flew in and sat down on the site. So thank you on that end as well. Alderman Rappel.
Thank you, Mayor. As long as, I was just curious, what is the timeframe for this? To the finish point, where the parking lot, everything is all constructed? What type of timeframe are you looking at?
That's a great question. Perfect.
Aren't you gonna break ground next week and there'll be people living in it by?
I cannot build it off of these.
May 1st.
That's on him. But no, we're hoping to obviously kick this thing off in spring here. And we'll probably have a year build on this, you know, 10 to 12 months from start to finish. But again, as a City of Manassia resident, I'm extremely excited to be a part of this project and I'm extremely excited for this group to bring it to the city. I, you know, I agree with you as far as the gem. When we sat in our first meetings with the group, just thinking about how many communities have an opportunity like we do in our downtown where a lot of the buildings, we have an opportunity to build some new stuff, you know, just like, you know, keeping the old but then getting into the future. But we have a river running right through it. I mean, it's amazing. It's at the same level. You know, Appleton, Appleton struggles. They're always trying to get their river to be at the same, you know, how can we connect the river to the downtown? It's hard. You look at Green Bay and how far they've come in the last five, 10 years because of the fact that the river is right there in their downtown. It's at the same level. We have a unique opportunity here and we're happy to bring the first project, but I know this is gonna be one of so many that are becoming in the next five to 10 years. So exciting stuff for all of us.
So we're looking at probably the end of?
Somewhere around the end of 2020. Yeah, probably the April of 2021. 2021. Okay. Thank you very much. Much appreciated.
So I guess what we're looking for, whoops, sorry. Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for telling us more about your project this evening and showing pictures. I was very curious to see the front and sides of the building because what was in our packet was a rooftop. So that was much appreciated. You mentioned in your presentation that you are currently working on other projects in the valley. And so if we wanted to take a peek or learn more about them, where might we go?
Well, sort of, one of a number of us, really.
Depends what you're looking to see. We have four different groups here.
Yeah.
Well, the one that is in our packet is RF.
RF Development?
RF Development, yes.
Yeah. RF Development is my ownership entity that I share with my partner, Stephen Rourke. So, and sort of RF Development is essentially involved in every project with this group. We're working with CR Structures on some of their projects in Appleton, working with Vision Architecture and some of their other projects. And they're all involved in all of the projects we're going to be proposing in downtown Manassia, including 140, the BRIN, and the others that are coming. So if you want to see what you're gonna kind of see, all of them that all of us are doing. It's hard to say there is one or two or three specifically, but if you are interested in the whole list and what's coming, we will be more than happy to provide that.
I'm just referencing the other ones that you mentioned in your letter. You said there's over $200 million of investment projects going on.
Which we're going to be rolling out in the coming months for here in Manassia. That's what, that's the dollar amount we're looking to bring to Manassia, starting with this. Well, yeah.
It already says.
Yeah, sort of over there, more over there-ish.
But you mentioned something you're working on in Appleton?
Yeah, Appleton is a project started by CR Structures that we were brought in on as a partner, that Vision Architecture is also working with.
Another housing.
You can see that one. It's called Block 800.
Great. I've heard of it. Thank you. Alderman Rappel asked about your units before for this particular building. And you mentioned that there will be one, two, and possibly three-bedroom units.
That is correct.
Have you determined what kind of need there is in the community in order to address that for this project?
We are basing the need on the report that the city had done a year ago.
Downtown Vision Plan.
Yeah, the Downtown Vision Plan. So that is, that, it was, that study that we are basing the need on for this and other projects moving forward.
Thank you. And I think that as we enter into the development agreement phase, I don't know how the rest of my colleagues feel, but I would like to know more about the units, what they'll look like, and then how many of each.
Absolutely.
Level you'll have. Thank you. The Water Street corridor plan was brought up and that was a plan that was developed by the community and the neighborhood through several meetings. They came up with two drawings that they felt strongly about for that Taco Street corridor as well. And so I'm wondering if you are familiar with those and if there's any way that we might be able to incorporate some of their ideas into this project.
Possibly, possibly is what I can leave as right, as with sort of right now. So.
Say we're aware of it and thinking of it and looking into that further.
Thank you. Oh, and you briefly mentioned a Phase 2.
Yes, which is this sort of plain white building there. Best use for the space will probably be some type of restaurant. But that is very much a Phase 2 and we won't even begin that phase until next summer at the earliest. We wanted to make sure, though, that again, knowing there is a need for more restaurants in downtown, especially creating an opportunity to put a restaurant on the river, which is very rare anywhere, we wanted to make sure there was a site set aside for it. What it's going to be, who the operator's going to be, et cetera, is still to be determined. But we wanted to make sure the infrastructure was there for it. So.
Thank you for telling us more about that.
Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Grant, last April, he sat before us here. None of us knew you. He talked about your wonderful family history and business. And now that you've come back and you've assembled an A-team around you and these people are well-known in the community, wonderful projects behind them. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Rappel.
Thank you, Mayor. How many commercial businesses or opportunities will there be in your building? How many like storefronts or, I guess, in that nature?
It's flexible, I guess, is the simple answer to that, but 8,000 square feet.
Okay.
And it'll depend on, you know, what the need and what the demand is.
And where would they be right now when I'm looking at that picture? And the, right around the front, just where the BRIN kind of had, where they're?
Yep. And they'll be front-to-back units. So they'd have a front door and then they'd have a back door. So if people parked on the back side, they can go in as well. So, you know.
Okay, just kind of repeating what the BRIN had as far as.
Absolutely. I mean, that makes good sense.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
So I guess what we're looking for tonight is to direct Sam and the rest of our team to start working on a development agreement based upon this plan. There's a couple of points in here that the development agreement would include selling the city-owned properties to the developers for a dollar, that we'd be looking at street versus parking lot, that we're going to be looking at the underground regional detention for our stormwater system, and that we start looking at the site design and the zoning and all those things as well. And we would want to bring that back to you. If I'm missing something, Sam, let me know. We'd bring back a development agreement for your review after that. But if there's points other than these, we'd like to hear about some of those points too or if you have any as we move forward with the process over the next few weeks, we'd want to know that as well. Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think there's any doubt on this council that there's any opposition to this potential proposal and to work out a development agreement. So I don't know if you need that in a formal motion, but I agree that there are gonna be more details. that there are gonna be more details, and even after you bring a proposal, there's gonna be amendments and changes. So, but for the meantime, in the meantime, I think we're all in agreement. We'd like to move forward and, uh...
If you want to make a formal motion, that's great.
I'll make a formal motion then that, uh, we, uh, enter into agreement with, uh, should it be RF Development? Our team?
Yeah, sure.
Should it be RF Development?
And bring back to the council for further review.
There's a motion, a second. I don't know who that was. So it looks like Alderman Taylor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you so much, gentlemen, and and Amy as well for coming this evening. So I was like, gentlemen, that doesn't quite work.
I know. I'm like, I'm here too.
We look forward to working with you more. Okay, and then we're gonna move back in order for the rest of the evening and move back to the minutes and communications to receive. Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like that we receive minutes A through G and communications H through J.
So motion, a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mayor. I have, um, hopefully a short discussion about, uh, the railroad letter that we received. Um, and you want to give, uh, Adam the mic? Um, as I was driving to the meeting this evening, I noticed that there was some big signs that say road to be closed, I believe this coming, is it Friday or, I forget. So you might want to touch on that, but for the people in the gallery, we have been diligently working hard, um, Alderman Langdon's resolution to deal with our railroad problems that we have in this community. It's, it's very hard to work with railroads. People think, why aren't you taking care of this? It's hard for us to do that. We can't even go and do it ourselves, because if we did something and it wasn't, if someone got into an accident or anything, then it becomes our problem, our liability, and now we're in lots of trouble. So, uh, there's a process that we have to go through. We've, we've done our homework. We've done that, and hopefully, um, we'll be able to, uh, get these corrected. I'll let Adam finish. But, um, when I looked at this letter, it looked like we still have a whole witness test of things to do first. Correct. I, and, but I was curious about those signs, if they had anything to do with this railroad crossing.
They do. Uh, it's kind of interesting, uh, in some of our internal staff meetings, we were surprised we hadn't heard from the railroad, uh, having started this process in as far along as we've gotten. Um, so there are actually two items on tonight's, uh, uh, agenda for us to, to look at or, or possibly discuss, and this is one of them. This letter lays out the timetable of, uh, of, uh, the OCR, which is the Office of Commissioner of Railroad's Investigation into these, these rough crossings. Um, we are prepared to, uh, provide written testimony and exhibits. Those are due tomorrow afternoon. Uh, we're sort of finalizing everything there. Uh, once, uh, they get those, then the railroad will have an opportunity to rebut, um, our exhibits and our testimony. And then in turn, there will be a public, public, public hearing. Um, also later, you'll see a resolution. It's just kind of funny. Again, like I said, the railroad, all of a sudden, um, we had heard from their legal counsel. They wanted to postpone, push back the, the timeframe of this process, uh, of which we will address tonight. And, um, and, and along with that, they also, um, indicated that, uh, that they're interested in us, or in, they are interested in, uh, looking to, uh, permanently close the Appleton Street uh, crossing as well. Um, and that's also gonna be addressed with your resolution tonight. Um, so that's where we're at with that. And then today, we did get a phone call from Warning Lights to, uh, let us know that the railroad intends to come in on Thursday. It was my understanding Thursday of this week, and what they're going to do is, obviously, there's many rail that are loose, and their intention is to come in and, um, work on securing that rail better. It is sort of a temporary, uh, repair. Uh, they're indicated to us that, uh, they intend to do additional work this summer. But what that entails, we're not sure. I would think that that will be determined as we move through this process with the OCR.
I also noticed that the City of Manassas shall arrange for a public room. Has that been determined? Would it be like the library downstairs?
No, it'll be here. One of these two rooms here.
Okay, because, uh, um, when, when that meeting is scheduled, I want to be able to, uh, have it at least before the next following that council meeting so that we can announce that to the public. Because I know, uh, Mark has, his phone has been ringing off the hook about this. I've had a few calls about it. I know other members have complained about it. Randy tells me he doesn't even use Racine Street anymore. So... So, um, I think the, the gallery would be full of, of residents. And by doing that, I think the state would realize that, uh, we are in the right on this. All right. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the minutes and communications? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item F is public comment in any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone who wishes to make a public comment this evening?
I haven't been here for a long time. Sandra DeBelle Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I told myself I was gonna behave and sit in the back row and not say anything. Unfortunately, I was prompted because in all the excitement over the presentation of the BRIN development, Alderman Sevenik never gave the gallery an opportunity to comment prior to taking a vote. But you already voted.
I have to follow the agenda. That's the law.
So, now, what, my understanding was that you were going to, um, allow the presentation, but not necessarily the development agreement. My, what I, I'm here for is, I am questioning having the development agreement on the agenda again, the cart before the horse. Because in my feeling, it was a great presentation. It'll be wonderful for the downtown. I have no issue with that. But it's the procedure by which it's going through. Obviously, you've already agreed to sell it for a dollar. That should have been in closed session.
We had not done that, Sandra.
Well, that's what they're proposing in their, their presentation. The same with the site plan or sale of public property. And man, and this should all be going through the Plan Commission first. You should be acknowledging the fact and having the attorneys set, set in. If you agree to sell it for a dollar, can you then come back and ask that? All the contingencies that you normally ask for. Can you buy it back for a dollar? Can you make sure the deed does not transfer to a nonprofit in the years to come? What are the site plans going to be? And all the setbacks and all those things. And instead of all your excitement, and my other question is, is this the one and only developer that ever came forward? Because it sounds like community development is tied to the skin. And is there a conflict of interest that a member on this group is also a member of the RDA? Or I'm sorry, yeah, the Redevelopment Authority? Or is this, obviously, this is a TIF district. Is this TIF gonna be handled by the city or by the Redevelopment Authority? And then you have no dollars estimated for the city's portion with an underground pond, and how much dollars are gonna be set aside for that and utilities? And it looks as if the Vacating Water Street, and will the future Phase Two Restaurant? And if development doesn't occur within a year, can we buy it back? And I mean, it's just kind of like, all of those things should have been addressed before just a rubber stamp, this is great. And don't get me wrong, it's great, but did anyone else come forward? My other common question is, is the mayor going to announce if he's running for reelection? I'm assuming he is. He worked all year to make sure the budget showed zero. Because I do think it's important for anyone out in the community who may be interested in running for any of the positions to be granted adequate time to organize a campaign. Thank you for your time.
So I just, uh, is there anyone else this evening? No? Okay, seeing no one else, I did want to comment that what we agreed to tonight was not a development agreement. It was to direct staff to create a development agreement for discussion. So all those items that Mrs. Taylor is asking about, those will all be coming back to the council again, and we'll be discussing them again.
Amendments will be added as I stated during the meeting.
Yeah, so, just so, we didn't agree on anything tonight. We agreed that we would like to continue the process tonight. So, moving on from that, we have the, the consent agenda this evening. And we have six items on the consent agenda, and I'm not gonna read them all tonight because Alderman Sevenik usually reads them all again. So does anyone wish to, um, make a motion to separate this evening?
I think most of them were gonna be separated anyways. So, um, I, item two, which obviously is a payment, we will separate. Item four and five, because we have a number of people in the gallery that, uh, had opinion on this particular item that we want to be able to not, not just, uh, slam dunk this. And, um, do we formally have to deny? And my next question would be item six then. Do we formally have to deny? Though, if the guy already said he's not going to do this?
It's withdrawn, so you don't need to, but you can if you'd like to. It, it was on the Plan Commission agenda.
We'll do it just to be safe, so the neighborhood's happy about it. So then, um, six also. So basically, Mayor, at this time, um, I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the minutes of the Common Council 12-2 of 2019, and the Personnel, Personnel Committee's, uh, recommended approval of the City of Manassas Employee Handbook.
There's a motion, a second. Is there, oh, there's no discussion. So if we could have a roll call vote, except for we missed someone. You know where Alderman Taylor went? Could we do a second?
Uh, yes, we have Alderman, um, Sevenik and Alderman Kruger.
So we have a motion. We have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes of December 2nd and the Personnel Committee Handbook. Personnel Committee Recommendation for the City Employee Handbook. So if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Tom Grady. Alderman Ted Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Repella.
Aye.
Alderman Nichols.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Sevenik.
Aye.
Alderman Langdon.
Aye.
Alderman Kruger.
Aye.
Motion carried on roll call eight-zero.
Item two, Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the payment, M, M, or MCC Incorporated Contracting Number 2019-04 for new street construction and reconstruction, various locations, in the amount of $293,818.2 Payment Number Two.
So motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Ted Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Repella.
Aye.
Alderman Nichols.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Sevenik.
Aye.
Alderman Langdon.
Aye.
Alderman Kruger.
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady.
Aye.
Motion carried on roll call eight-zero.
So items four, five, and six kind of go together. It's up to you if you want to take them separately or together.
I think they need to be separate.
Okay, so Alderman Sevenik wishes to take them up separately. Do we have a motion?
Who's on the Planning Commission?
Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of the Certified Survey Map as presented, consolidating lots 1147 and 1151 Racine Road. As recommended by the Plan Commission.
Is there a second? If there's no second, the motion dies. I don't know what happens when we get a CSM that someone asks to have. Alderman Sevenik?
Uh, I agree. Uh, I believe now that to approve a special use permit is out of order now, there, because the lot does not no longer comply. Uh, therefore, uh, it, it remains an R1 property.
That property is currently, is commercial property.
Commercial, excuse me.
Um, but I do not, if we do not wish to approve the Certified Survey Map, I believe we'd have to have a reason behind it.
Okay, Mayor, at this time, I'll move that we, uh, deny the, uh, special use permit for 1147 and 1151 Racine Road.
There's a motion, a second, to deny the special use permit. Is there discussion? Alderman Nichols?
My question would be for Director Schrader. Typically, when the Plan Commission makes a recommendation, they state, con, conditions or reasons that, uh, such permit would be approved. So is there additional information needed here to, um...
I, I guess I would ask the city attorney, but my, my thought is that we probably should have findings supporting the denial, um, because the property is a C1. Uh, the, the current lot lines are small. Um, so if it was a commercial development following that, uh, we likely would not have any issues with that lot consolidation. Uh, so again, with, with a lot consolidation, it does not necessarily, um, because of, it's looking at just the lot and how that represents the, the zoning district. So I guess I, I would recommend that.
Alderman Sevenik?
Uh, thank you. Uh, did we necessarily need to do that on item four? Because then there was a motion, it just was denied, and there was no second. So in that case, there was no, um, added information.
I guess that's what I was trying to bring up. If, if a Certified Survey Map meets all the criteria within our zoning, we would probably have issues with denying it.
My reasoning was because, the reason that the approval of a special use permit was denied was because the Common Council chose not to approve the Certified Survey Map. Therefore, it would not be in order.
That'd be for number, okay.
Well, is that a good enough standard?
Attorney Captain, do you want to make the comment that you just told me? No?
If, if I, I guess if I, if I may just, uh, regarding that CSM, so the current lot consult, the lot configuration of the two lots does not even meet our zoning code requirements for a C1 zoning district. So again, by combining those, it does meet the minimum lot width, the minimum lot size, um, and therefore becomes a, a lot buildable for any type of commercial development allowable by the C1, uh, zoning district. So again, I, I just wanted to reiterate that as a...
And for, so the residents understand too that it remains commercial. So therefore, any type of commercial property could, could be built there, because it's zoned for that now. So, I mean, your choice is either, a fourplex or some type of business and, you know, here's where I personally, I'm just gonna go off the tilt here. My personal problem is, and it always is, Fox Crossing. Fox Crossing has done this to the city so many times, it has just disturbed me. They have held out multimillion-dollar developments for some... Fox Crossing has done this to the city so many times, it has just disturbed me. They have held out multimillion dollar developments for some, for the city, and that was when they were a township also. Now they're a village and they're acting even worse. To be able to put in the development that they did over there in this neighborhood is an assault to Manashe. And I, in some ways, I feel it's personal and that, that bothers me. And we have an, an individual here that has a business that's in that community and they, I, I know you're having issues with that particular community too. So, um, this is partly why I am not interested in, in shoving in more properties because we all, by doing this, my personal feeling is we're accepting what they did. And I don't, I don't go along with that. Yeah, I, I think that if he wants to come in and put a single family home like the rest of the area, I'm comfortable with that. Uh, if he wants to put in commercial, which it's zoned, I would have to go along with that because that's what our, uh, master plan already indicates that it's for. But, um, the fourplex, I, I, it, it, we're basically saying what Fox Crossing did over there then is okay. That's why I am not in favor of this whatsoever. So I hope my motion, because of what I stated under item four, that the approval of the certified survey map didn't even have a second. We can't do number five, and that's why we denied it.
Alderman Taylor?
I just want to echo the same sentiments of Alderman Sevenik. Uh, you know, maybe they want to come back and build two beautiful, uh, R-one family homes that matches the neighborhood, matches the backyards up. And Racine Road has many beautiful homes on it, uh, all the way out to Valley Road. So it is a, a residential quarter. And, uh, uh, if there was an opportunity for commercial, well, so be it. That's what it's owned. But, uh, the motel six that, uh, Fox Crossing is building next door to this property is going to put, uh, six units in that, in that small building. And I still don't know whether they're going to get the parking. And, uh, then we want to put a fourplex next door. So now we have ten units within, uh, a lot, two and a half lots. And I just don't see any reason why this community, we're moving away from, um, the two family. We're trying to restore those to single families. And it was one of the mayor's initiatives. We're doing an excellent job at that in the city of Manashe. And I think we, we need to, uh, continue that path and, uh, the, the fourplex just doesn't fit, especially with the six blocks going next door to it. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, there's a motion on the floor to deny the special use permit. And if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Repella. Alderman Nichols. Alderman Taylor.
This is to deny the special use permit.
Alderman Sevenik. Alderman Langdon. Alderman Kruger. Alderman Tom Grady. Alderman Ted Grady. Motion carried on roll call eight-zero.
Item six is the denial of the rezoning. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as stated by one of the people from the gallery, actually, two of the people in the gallery, uh, they were thankful that the individual chose not to do this and build a, a single family home, which I think is the right direction. I'll move at this time that we deny the rezoning request for parcel four-dash-zero-one-zero-zero-three-dash-zero-zero, the Appleton Street property.
There's a motion, a second. Alderman Taylor?
Sam and, and, uh, our community development director and Adam, our public works director, I want to point out that someone did a curb cut in that area there, on this property or the property to south of it. And I would like to have you guys check that curb cut to see if that was legal or what they did. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. Item I is action items. First item is the accounts payable and payroll for December fifth through twelfth. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the accounts payable and payroll for the term of December fifth through December twelfth, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of one million two hundred fifty-one thousand one hundred fifty-nine dollars and sixteen cents.
There's a motion, a second, by Alderman Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Nichols. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Sevenik. Alderman Langdon. Alderman Kruger. Alderman Tom Grady. Alderman Ted Grady. Alderman Repella. Motion carried on roll call eight-zero.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications for two thousand nineteen through twenty-one. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of the beverage operators license applications for the two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-one licensing period as listed under approved in the clerk's memo dated December eleventh, two thousand nineteen.
There's a motion, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. Item three is the appointment of election inspectors for two thousand twenty through twenty-one elections. Is there a motion? Not everyone at once. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the appointment of election inspectors, uh, as presented for the twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one elections.
There's a motion, a second. I'm not sure who you grabbed. Ted, it was Tom Grady, I believe, correct? Is there any discussion? Tom, Tom nodded his head yes, so. Seeing no further discussion, if we, we could just, all those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. Um, I don't see Peter out there, right?
No, it doesn't look like Peter is here, but I guess I could provide some background.
Why don't we just skip over that one and we'll finish up the other three items. If he shows up, then we'll.
Otherwise, I, I do know, uh, Kip is here as well, so, but we can follow that up.
So we have three resolutions then remaining. Resolution twenty-nine nineteen, do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for, uh, resolution, uh, or R twenty-nine nineteen, the resolution declaring property to be blighted and authorizing the redevelopment authority of the city of Manashe to acquire and assist the redevelopment of the property at four fifty-five Baldwin, introduced by the mayor.
There's a motion, a second, by Alderman Kruger. Any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Just to be clear for those watching and those in the gallery this evening, this resolution pertains to the public work facility on Baldwin Street as it is today.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Taylor. Alderman Sevenik. Alderman Langdon. Alderman Kruger. Alderman Tom Grady. Alderman Ted Grady. Alderman Repella. Alderman Nichols. Motion carried on roll call eight-zero.
Item two is resolution thirty. Is there a motion? Alderman Repella?
I make a motion, uh, for R thirty nineteen, resolution declaring property to be blighted, authorizing the redevelopment authority to acquire and assist the redevelopment of the property, Providence Terrace Properties. Those are those three, right? Introduced by Mayor Merkis.
I believe there's six or seven. Seven properties.
Right, but I believe that we took off those three, the dog club, the storage shed, and that other one.
Director Schrader, did you want to just?
That's.
Yeah, so these are, uh, this is in reference to the seven vacant properties over there. Uh, so there are seven city-owned vacant sites. Uh, but the three that you had just referenced, the private, uh, property owners sites, those sites were recommended to be removed by the RDA. So the resolution in front of you today does not include those properties.
Great, okay.
Is there a second to that motion? There's a motion, a second. Oh, was there?
Yes, Alderman Kruger.
There already was a second, okay. Is there any more discussion? Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Sevenik. Alderman Langdon. Alderman Kruger. Alderman Tom Grady. Alderman Ted Grady. Alderman Repella. Alderman Nichols. Alderman Taylor. Motion carried on roll call eight-zero.
Item three is resolution thirty-one. Is there a motion? Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make the motion, uh, for, um, R dash thirty-one dash nineteen. It's a resolution regarding the repair of at glance crossing of Racine Street, Appleton Street, and Pier Street. And that's introduced by Mayor Merkis and myself, Alderman Langdon.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second, by Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I think we probably roll call on this one. If we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Sevenik. Alderman Langdon. Alderman Kruger. Alderman Tom Grady. Alderman Ted Grady. Alderman Repella. Alderman Nichols. Alderman Taylor. Motion carried on roll call eight-zero.
Okay, we'll move back up to item five. So you're the only one out in the gallery yet. Director Schrader, did you?
Yeah, why don't I provide a little bit of background, um, and just so everyone knows, so, uh, Kip has been very busy. Uh, he's involved, uh, in this development as well, so, but I'll just provide some background. And I know, I think Kip has some background information on, on the private side. So again, the city of Manashe did create a TIF district, uh, this past spring, uh, TIF fourteen for the redevelopment of the Manashe Plaza as well as the front corridor. Um, so as part of that development agreement, there, there were certain, um, timelines, uh, uh, things of that nature and as well as the, the project details. Um, so the front portion or the Starbucks, uh, building, I guess, is what kind of we're referring it to, uh, that was constructed. Starbucks is in, in there, uh, seems to be doing very, very well. Um, and obviously, a lot of the question has been on, on the rear, uh, development of the, the back Manashe Plaza space. So the development agreement stated that by September one, uh, two thousand nineteen, that construction would begin. And the construction or substantial completion would be, uh, completed by the end of the year, December thirty-first, uh, two thousand nineteen. Uh, so at, uh, I believe in October, uh, ourself and the city attorney had, uh, noted, gave them a notice of default on their construction start date. Um, so basically, as part of that development agreement, they have sixty days to cure. So, um, basically meaning, even though the development agreement specifically says September one, uh, they would have sixty days to cure based upon from that notification. So they, as long as they start construction by the end of the year, um, they would still be, uh, in an active development agreement. Obviously, with the end of the year approaching for the substantial completion, I don't think you're that good, uh, at constructing that site. So, um, it, they will likely be into default, um, at that time. Uh, a- again, um, I, we know this was a concern. Uh, we did meet with a developer, um, and had some correspondence over the last, uh, couple of weeks. Um, it sounds, it looks like unfortunately, he was trying to make it down from, uh, Michigan but wasn't able to do so. Uh, but basically, uh, they are, uh, and maybe I can let just Kip kind of take off here and then I could fill in a little bit there.
So, uh, a little background, um, they originally were working with a different, um, contractor and a different architect. Uh, and, and we, Vision Architecture, um, Adam, who was just here, um, he was brought in and then I was brought in a little bit later. So that did delay it a little bit. Um, and then, but the main thing that really delayed it is, um, is the financing part of it. Um, they now have the financing, uh, because it's a, and again, since two thousand eight, a lot of these type of projects have struggled to get their financing put in place. Um, but now they have it in place. I do have a signed contract. Uh, we will be pulling a building permit this week. Um, and we will be out there, uh, constructing, uh, this project. Um, again, with the, uh, with how quickly we did the, uh, the Starbucks project, I think from start to finish, that thing got done in ninety days, um, and opened up. Um, I would anticipate, I don't know if we'll get, you know, I think to substantial completion by the end of, there he is. Right on time. So, uh, you can step up too. So, uh, um, just again, as far as we do, we're going to be pulling a building permit this week. Um, and we're going to start construction on this thing and we're going to hammer away this winter, uh, and get this thing, uh, completed. Uh, again, huge, uh, I think for the city of Manashe, for that area, for a shopco building that's sitting there empty, uh, the revitalization of that area is vital to the city of Manashe. Um, as hard it is sometimes to get the financing put in place, uh, it's also really impossible to get that in place without city support on those type of projects. So, um, I'll, uh, with that, I'll turn it over to Peter and let him, uh, kind of talk a little bit about, um, I think they got, uh, some good news as far as some tenants there and possibly moving in and some other things. So I just talked a little bit about their, uh, moving things forward, so.
Uh, thank you. Um, I was told seven-thirty and apparently you're being efficient tonight, so I, I.
We actually pushed you back a couple of times just to hope that you made it here on time.
Well, I, I appreciate that. Uh, again, my name is Peter Youngbacher. As, as Kip was just stating, as I caught him coming in, uh, talking about, uh, pulling the permit, I had visited with Kip on, uh, Friday, I think it was, on a return from another site. But before I get into that, I, I wanted to hand out a couple of pictures that you could pass around. Uh, Kip, as you know, uh, with his firm, was involved as a general contractor on the commencement of the first building, uh, which is, uh, the Starbucks building, uh, this building here. So, uh, can I just pass these around, there's some shots, if you haven't been to the project. We, uh, we've, we actually finished, uh, ahead of schedule. Uh, we beat, uh, the, the date, one of the dates in the development agreement by, by several weeks. Starbucks, uh, experience to date has been positive. Uh, I had visited with their real estate manager about two weeks ago. Uh, we were doing a, a capstone on, on the, the whole process and, uh, they're hitting their targets, uh, from a sales standpoint. Uh, they were happy with, uh, Kip's work, timing, and communication. Uh, and, uh, they've actually asked us to do a couple of other Starbucks in Dane County for them. So, uh, I think that's a, a good result and we're talking to Kip about helping us with those. We do have a, a, a second tenant, uh, for about fourteen hundred square feet in a space adjacent to Starbucks. It would be, and again, I have a number of these to hand out. Uh, I think I have just about enough for everyone. It's, it's a national brand name, uh, new to the market, which is hopefully what we'll be able to generate, uh, over time. And I have, tomorrow, I'm actually meeting with two prospective tenants, one of which I've drafted a lease for and we're negotiating its terms on for space in the back, uh, in the pocket in the northwest corner, uh, in a, uh, health food-related topical area, I think you'd call it. And, uh, another one that also is a wellness-type facility that would be picking either a suite hopefully next to that or one adjacent to that. So we're beginning to get some traction. Uh, the, the marketing process is beginning to take up, uh, uh, speed and getting some momentum. We did encounter, uh, several things, uh, that, uh, pushed it back a bit, one of which we had some delays with the state in the approval process. We had some design issues that had to be redone. We had some cost issues which we worked through with, with Kip, uh, and with his subcontractors. All the original bids came in, uh, more than we had budgeted. Uh, and Kip did a nice job, uh, having conversations with those contractors to try and get us back into budget. Uh, we also have an ongoing issue which isn't going to be resolved immediately and we've had conversations with Sam and, and with the mayor regarding the, uh, development agreement and some language in the development agreement that deals with the monetization of the TIF. Uh, as you recall, uh, at the very beginning of this process, we indicated that part of our capital stack was running through a process of, of what we call monetizing the TIF. And what that essentially means is we're taking the benefits, the future benefits that are derived. that are derived from the TIF process, and essentially discounting them back to present value, and having a third-party intermediary lend against that revenue stream, so that we can create cash to use to invest in the asset upfront immediately. It's the alternative to a TIF grant, upfront grant. And what we have in this case is a pay-go TIF over a period of time. And we have some language that we had in our agreement, that we were circulating among prospective TIF, pay-go monetization, third-party intermediaries, and we were running into some difficulties with that language. So we asked them, well, what language do you want? And they gave us a model for a TIF that had been done in the city of Appleton to use, and we'll need to come back and talk to city council, planning staff, and the mayor to suggest that this language for the TIF is what is required for us to be able to monetize the flow of TIF benefits for the project. That said, I sort of came in as Kip was talking about timing. We will have a permit pulled momentarily. I think we have all the state approvals now, which again, took a little bit more time than we had hoped for, after some of the facade changes that we had gone through. The agreement itself calls for substantial completion by the end of the year. We're probably going to be a quarter away from that.
Kim guaranteed, Kip guaranteed us completion by the end of the year before you got.
By the end of the year.
Yes.
Thank you.
I just make the promises. My.
Yeah. But we're all praying for a mild winter as well, because that has an impact on the schedule. But one of the other things that's had an impact, and this is becoming more apparent throughout the state, is the vast amount of Shopko department store space that has been dumped on the market. And the impact of that, in conjunction with the rest of the challenges that are being faced in the retail world. So I had that come up repeatedly and constantly as a question about that building, and I don't own that building. That building is owned by a gentleman in Madison, who is, I don't think I'd call him an active real estate developer, he's more of a passive real estate investor. And what you're going to have to have happen with that building is have an active real estate developer come and try and solve the problem of the next generation user of that space. It's going to be a significant challenge. Those people have lots of options available. My community of Oshkosh has its own Shopko. Nina has its own Shopko. Appleton has its own Shopkos. There are literally a hundred of them in the state that are available for that next generation opportunity, including the one in Manasha. So it's going to act as a drag on the process. Again, we are intent upon moving forward with what we're doing, albeit we're running a little bit behind schedule. I don't think the dynamics of the TIF numbering will change over the life of the program. We did accomplish the major investment this year that was called for in the TIF by getting the outlot building done, and that'll result in a substantial increment being created for real estate taxes beginning January one, 2020. So we're ready for liftoff. Kip has been very helpful in keeping things moving forward for us and getting us to the numbers that we need. I'm going to have to come back and visit with the city and council about some of this language. It's fairly technical. I don't know if you want to get into it tonight, but it's something that we need to do to mirror what your competitors are doing, Appleton, for example, and other communities with their TIF development agreements. So that's really what I have. The handout that I gave you and the pictures, again, are representative, but we were able to get done quickly. And we're excited that we're beginning to get some traction for some users in the back, and that Kip is ready to start work momentarily.
Director Schrader, did you have any other comments before we open it up to the council?
I don't think so. I think if there's any questions I can answer, I can certainly do that.
Does anyone on the council have any questions yet this evening? Alderman Sevenick?
Thank you. Yeah, well, we had an agreement. We had an a pay-go agreement, and what I'm hearing tonight is we want to change that. I don't know the details, so I don't have really a strong opinion one way or another. I'd be open to hear that, but just so you understand, we went out of our way to accommodate you and help you, and we have an agreement. So I just want to leave it at that. I'm still open to hear any other possibilities. I don't care about what they're doing in Appleton, or Fox Crossing, or Nina, or whatever. We had an agreement, so.
In terms of the agreement, the agreement called for substantial completion.
Let me finish. Also, too, I don't know if this was a factor at all, but we had a lousy year as far as weather went. We had so much rain, and I was really surprised that you were able to accomplish what you did with the Starbucks property. Whoever those subcontractors are and all that, they did a great job, you know? And even we, as a city, were affected by weather as far as some of our street projects and things like that. So I understand that. But I'm going to keep an open mind, but I have to say, your biggest supporter up here was me. And basically, because I want to see this succeed. And we'll just take it day by day for now. I understand you now got financing in order, and we'll proceed.
On the date issue, the date called for substantial completion of the next phase by the end of the year. So if you look at substantial completion being within ninety days of that date, and you look at a program with a useful life that could be twenty to twenty-five years, you have to sort of put that all in context. So that's the date, and whether or not the legal definition of substantial completion and material completion, I mean, those are all arguments you could make. I think the important thing to focus on is, is that we have completed, ahead of schedule, actually, one building. And I think we're going to be completing the second phase within a reasonable timeframe of what the contract calls for, and it doesn't really make a material difference. The question is materiality, and I don't think this is material. It's going to require an amendment. Again, this happens all the time. In my experience, it happens all the time. With other developers that I work with or see do this, it happens a lot. It's not unusual, and it's not an extraordinarily long period of time either. It's actually a fairly short period of time.
Mark, if you would let me yield, let me finish what I'd like to say. I've had council members bend my ear about this. They're very, let's see, what's the best word to use? They're not as supportive as they were in the past. And technical months or weeks or whatever, this is a pay-go, and the performance needs to be there. Now, I've seen your other projects, and you can be very proud of those. Those are, especially the one in Fond du Lac, beautiful.
Thank you.
But I think the biggest monkey wrench that came into this whole thing was the Shopko thing. I mean, that really threw a monkey wrench into everything. But still, we hadn't, we still had an agreement for the rest of that property to be done by the end of, I believe, this year. And I don't think you're going to get that accomplished within the next couple of weeks. So it is a pay-go, pay-as-you-go, and if things aren't done according to an agreement, there's no incentive. So I just want to make that clear, and that everyone understands that. But again, a third time I said it, I'm going to keep an open mind and see what you want to bring forward, and I'm happy to hear that you have potential clients, because I've noticed that those that you had in there switched out and just went down the road. And that's unfortunate, but maybe you have bigger plans than just those particular tenants. So we'll see where we go as we move along. Thank you.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to be very vocal, because I've been against this from the start, and I voted against this TIF, along with another Alderman. I don't care about the completion date. You were supposed to start this project, and you did not, and that's what makes me really, really mad, is it was in the agreement, I don't care about completion and language, it was the start date. Still sitting there. And so as far as I'm concerned, I'm still totally against this TIF. You were out there, or out there, saying that we needed, you needed the TIF to start immediately. What the heck have you done so far? I don't care about, you, we created the TIF for you, and then now you come back and say you're having troubles with funding? What the hell? Isn't that supposed to be done a whole long time ago, when you came and said to us, you needed this TIF now? So just to let you know, I'll be voting no, and I'm not going to have an open mind. So I'm still against this TIF. Thank you.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned the monetizing of the TIF in order to get the financing, if I'm understanding right. So did you finance the Starbucks building all on your own without using monetizing the TIF in any way?
Well, the TIF has not been monetized yet, and that's an issue that, regardless of your opinion on this particular program, the city of Manasha has to come to terms with whether or not it's going to be engaging in economic development.
Well, hold on, hold on, hold on.
But, no, the answer, I'm sorry, but it can't be monetized with its current form. I've got to change the language. I'm going to have to come back and make a request. This is the first monetization of a TIF for the city. So the language isn't quite what it needs to be in order for that process to be finished.
And I take it you had attorneys look over the paperwork when you signed the TIF, I take it? I mean, did.
It's really the bankers that are driving this, the attorneys aren't driving it. The reality is that the bankers have to have language that allows the TIF to be monetized. It's their money. And we had not done this before in this community. And what we're finding, fortunately, I didn't have the benefit of that experience with them as it related to this document. We didn't have everything in it that they needed to have it monetizable. So answering your question, in the interim, what I've been doing is advancing my credit, my portfolio cash, to move the process forward in anticipation of resolving that issue. So again, as an investor, I'm the one investing my dollars in your community. And as developers, we have choices that we can make when we do this throughout the state. I'm happy to do this here with the assistance that you have offered that particular development. And I'm still planning on proceeding. I'm planning on coming back with the language that would be necessary to monetize the TIF. It has not been monetized, and in the interim, I've had to solve that problem by investing my portfolio resources to get that building complete, and now to go on with the second phase in anticipation of eventually monetizing the TIF. But it's not done yet.
Yeah, but my issue is, and I'm going to try to just be blunt and short on this, but you were supposed to start the project some time ago, which means you should have been trying to get the financing, which means you should have known about the issue with the monetizing and coming up. I mean, it's all fine and dandy that, you know, that you're trying to improve the property. I was not one of them that was for this, because I did not think it was a good investment for the city to begin with. And just to, you know, what to point out, over in St. Cloud, Minnesota, there is an exact replica of what's going on here, except for the developer decided to fund it all on his own. But that's neither here nor there. But to piggyback what Alderman Sevenick said, is that we already have an agreement. And the city, unfortunately, has had many developers that come in that just don't do what it is that they, what they promised that they're going to do. And now we have developers coming in that's not asking too much from the city either and doing exactly what they're going to do. So I'm just, for the sake of the city, please make this the only, the last delay that there is on this. I mean, it's, there's a lot of people that just get really tired of developers coming in and not performing like they're supposed to. We have TIF, the TIF ties up certain assets of the city that we could be using in other TIFs if this doesn't work out. It makes everybody nervous. If this doesn't work out, we still have that percentage of our assets, of our monetary assets of the city tied up in the TIF. And everybody just wants it to work, and they want it to work without having to make a lot of different adjustments to it. So I just ask that, can you please just make sure this is the last delay that you have? Thank you.
Could I respond to the TIF issue? Again, but for the TIF and the investment, the city's opportunity cost, let's say, let's frame it in that context. The city's opportunity cost is the utilization of the statutory amount that it could TIF other projects for in the community. And my recollection of the conversations we had, that the, and maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the utilization of TIF to the statutory amount allowed in the city is only about fifty percent at the moment?
I'm not sure exactly what the number is, but with some of the other projects that are coming up, we could overrun that percentage pretty quickly, especially with the one that we presented earlier tonight. That's another ten million dollars that goes into that as well, so.
Yeah, as I recall, I thought the additional amount was somewhere around sixty million dollars, based on the percentage when we did the analysis, and we had.
Sounds within reason, yeah.
So that's part of the opportunity cost. The rest of it is, because it's a pay-go TIF, the exposure to the city is nothing more than it would have been had nothing happened, because the value, the value would, frankly, the value, what would have happened is I would have been talking to your assessor about the value of that project and saying, it's no longer worth six million dollars, it's worth three million dollars, and this is why it's worth three million dollars. And I probably would have been successful in getting a reduction in value. So the consequence of doing nothing is a further deterioration of economic values, particularly that one. So I don't think there's an opportunity cost for crowding out other TIFs, there's plenty of room left over. If we do nothing, then the value of that asset has arguably gone down considerably, because I have a hundred thousand square feet of vacant space next door that is creating an anchor on that whole corner. And I am willing, and have been willing, and already have invested more than a million dollars, and have increased the increment by about a million dollars with what Kip has been able to build for me, and built ahead of schedule. Now, the schedule we talked about was commencement September thirtieth, it's now December fifteenth. So again, in a life of a twenty-year project, is that really material? And again, I don't think it is. We're ready to go. I'm moving ahead with this pall of suggesting that you're not going to have a TIF, but I believe in the end, you'll see the benefit of it as we get that project done, because we're planning on doing what Councilman Sevenick was talking about in Fond du Lac. We took a reach there, and we created a gateway into a community that has created lots of other spinoff benefits. So I think that's the kind of vision the city has to have. You can't be looking at whether we're a month or two months behind on a project that really is going to transform a gateway into this community. And I'm trying to do it right. Oftentimes, it takes more time, and I want to make sure I do it right. And this is a gateway project. This is a significant investment in a street that desperately needs it. All you have to do is drive down it tonight and look at it. It's severely under-invested. I'm the guy with the money now suggesting to make the investment. I, I'm willing to move forward and, and do it the right way. But oftentimes, it takes more time than we, we, we sometimes think. My mistake was I probably should have put in an extra three to six months for a start date to give me a wider window to get all these things resolved. But I mean, that's, that's behind us and that's why we're here today. But, but again, I think you have to look at the, the bigger picture here. The bigger picture is you have a street that needs to have investment. I'm the guy who's willing to make the investment. And Kip is willing to build this investment that we're willing to make, and he did a great job. We're already off to, I think, I hope those pictures prove that we're off to a good start in terms of architectural style and adding some excitement to the street. But y- y- you can't come here and beat developers up because they're a month or two short when we're, we're the ones making the investment. And this is an investment that I'll be with for 20 years, and hopefully the city will be with for much longer than that.
So I guess just to build off your comment a little bit, Sam and I have been working pretty closely with you over the past year-ish timeframe now, I think. And you're right, this is a gateway into our community. We kind of have two options here. We can kind of let it decline, or we can work on investing into that. And I think it's important that we protect those gateways. Starbucks sends a really good message to us. If Starbucks wants to go there and thinks it's a good opportunity for them, guess what? Other retailers are going to want to be there as well. And I think so, several of us on staff have noticed that we've spent an awful lot of money on Starbucks or their spouses or their friends. So we all know that Starbucks has been somewhat successful over there. Focusing on the outcome though, what we want this area to look like for the next 10 years, I think that's what we really have to look at, and we do want you to perform. And we're willing to look at this amendment, but it's not necessarily a slam dunk. But I, I think it has to benefit both of us as we move forward and that outcome that you're talking about. And I mean, I'm willing to look at what you're bringing forward as well. I think that the outcome will be good from what I've seen on the drawings. And I think if you have some construction people out there before anything comes before us, that will be helpful in getting that moved forward through the council as well. We do have some draft language. I don't think the attorney has had a chance to look at it yet, but we will definitely want to get together and talk about that as well. I'm not sure who's next on the list. Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with the mayor's sentiments. I'm sorry, I kind of set the tone here. I, I certainly don't want to beat up on someone who's made an outstanding commitment and investment in Minasha. I want you to know personally, on my interpersonal level, that I truly appreciate what you've done here in the city of Minasha, and I thank you for that. The area is under-invested, and I don't know who else would take this on, but of course, it is your investment too. And I think we do make a good team, and I want us to continue to work together. And I'm looking forward to, to the future, and I think, again, I said it three times, let's move forward and hopefully we'll have, we'll all be happy in the long run. Thank you.
Alderman Grati.
Thank you, Mayor. I too, Peter, think what you're doing for Minasha is great, but, and you look at this place we're, we're looking at, that is a great location with the interstate and everything right there. So just be wise and be careful, because time might not be on your side if somebody else also comes and says, hey, I want to do something here too now. So we'll listen to your amendment. We'll listen to what you put forth. I backed you back then with the pay-go, and I think, you know, we can work something out here, because that is an awesome area right there, so we got to get this moving.
Alderman Taylor.
Beautiful, beautiful develop, development. Appreciate that. We have a new opportunity that's taking place as we talk here with 700, 800 new people coming from Minnesota and other areas for the Fleet Farm office building. They're taking over the secure right around the corner from us. And I think there's a lot of opportunity there. I would hope maybe that ShopCo could be a training center for them maybe, or maybe, uh, maybe they want to change the scope of their store or something, uh, more of a fast mark or something with items or. So I think there's opportu, really good opportunity there too with that. And with all those people coming to that area, of course, with the Starbucks area is outstanding, so appreciate the development.
Thank you.
I think Kip has his sign on that one too, doesn't he? Alderman Langton.
Thank you, Mayor. I got two questions. So, um, how long have you owned that mini mall?
How long have I owned the center? The, the, the one in back you're talking about, or the one in front?
In back.
In back. Uh, since.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, in back, yeah, the, the shop.
Early 2000, about 19 years.
So, okay, 19 years. So then, um, my second question then is, you've owned it for 19 years, and you just mentioned that it, that it is severely bad. Why is that?
I mentioned it was severely bad?
Yep.
What, what do you, I, you want to put that in context? I don't quite.
About the building, the building, how rundown it is. You just said that.
I think, I think you said under-invested in the area.
No, no. You said the building itself was bad, severely bad.
I don't believe I said that.
You wrote it down as you were talking.
Well, I, I, I don't, I don't believe I said that. I'm sorry. We have a misunderstanding. I don't believe I said that.
So the building, so you're looking, you wanted the TIF to help, and, and, and you want to put new facade on it and make it to look better and all that. Why did it take so long? It has looked like crap for a long time, and so you've owned it for 19 years.
Well, I, I, I take issue with it looking like crap. I think that's a subjective term, which is not.
Well, drive by and look inside the buildings.
Well, it's because we're in the process of beginning remodeling. Let me answer your question directly, because it deals with the life cycle, the life cycle of, of a, of an investment. Uh, when, when, when I bought the building, there was a grocery store in that center, okay?
Yeah.
What happened to that grocery store? Where'd it go?
Some building across the street.
Yeah. So what, what did I have at that point? I had 57,000 square feet of vacant space in a 90,000 square foot center. What did I do? I found a replacement for it that I had to invest a million and a half dollars to induce to come in and take that space. A million and a half dollars during a recession, when it is very difficult to get capital for what we call tenant improvements or securing second-generation users in buildings. So what I was able to do was able, was get experienced fitness to occupy 37,000, 38,000 square feet out of the 57,000 square feet by reinvesting in the center. I had several other tenants that came in that we provided tenant improvements for. Some of them failed. They didn't have sustainable business plans. And they failed. Some of them succeeded and some of them failed. Now, we've lost several just recently, and one of them went out of business. One of them closed that store in this market, and another one left us to another location owing us money, and we're in the process of trying to collect it. However, we have now, with the plans that we have circulated, started getting new interest from businesses that probably have a more viable, sustainable business plan that bring in goods and services to the city that you haven't seen before that will provide, I think, the kind of investment excitement that you need for the rest of that gateway. So when you talk about the life cycle of a building, when, when that grocery store left, I had an option. I had a non, what we call a non-recourse loan, which means as an owner, you do not have personal liability on the note which finances the mortgage on the property. I had a choice to make. I could simply go back to my lender and say, here are the keys to the property. I've just lost essentially 60,000 square feet out of a 90,000 square foot center. The center is toast. And obviously, I didn't do that. I reinvested in the center at a time in which was very difficult to raise money for capital improvements. And we now have a business that is sustainable. They're actually doing quite well. I think they add significant benefits to the city of Minasha. So there, there, there is a life cycle to all of these properties, and this is now part of the life cycle that I'm willing to reinvest in it again and put more money into it again. And this time redesign the exterior and make it a gateway into the community.
So you think that by just resigning, re, fixing it up, is going to bring businesses in there? You can guarantee that? Right now, there's.
I can't, I can't guarantee that at all.
Exactly. Right now, there's 10, right now, there's 10 openings, and I'm not sure if Laidwell Carpeting is still in there?
No, they've left.
Then that's 11 openings right now.
Right.
That are there, so.
And, and what is your choice? Again, you do nothing, and I rely upon.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying you wanted a TIF, and you wanted our help. And, and by making it really nice, you have, we have 11, you have 11 openings in there. So I, I, I'll just, I'll wait and see. I guess, you know, that's all I can do, and, and if it, if it, if it works, then I'm wrong. Then, then I apologize. But right now, with 11 openings in there, I, I, I just, I just have a question, Mark.
So do I, so do I. But, but the, the problem is if you don't invest. If, if you don't invest, you will be stagnant. And, and what's, what's happening.
What are you investing in?
I, I'm, I'm.
Just the facade, right?
The retail environment is based on a lot of things. Location, physical appearance of the real estate in which you conduct your business, the cost of that location in terms of how much sales you can generate and how much rent you can afford to pay. There are lots of variables that go into this, and it's just like anything in the world. You invest in education, you invest in healthcare, you invest in housing. You have to invest in retail environments in which you want people to conduct business to provide services to your citizens. And, and I'm not a citizen of the city, but I'm willing to invest a lot more than many citizens have. And I'm doing it at a lot of personal risk that, that I don't think you quite appreciate.
As of right now, no, because you know what? You've already defaulted and you haven't even, because you didn't start the project. That's the issue I have. But one more question I got is, do you own? Like, uh, my glasses, I got them at ShopCo Opto, Optical all the time. So I walk in there, do you own that, the inside of that, um, those spots?
Uh, the inside of them. Do I own?
In shop, you know, where, where the glasses was, ShopCo Optical. So I walk in there, do you own, so you're, you're going to have to clean all the inside out and redo all the insides, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
ShopCo is filed for bankruptcy.
Right.
They have effectively abandoned, if there's personal property in there, I have to get rid of it.
Yep. I, okay, that's what it is. Okay, thank you.
That's one of the joys of being a landlord, when you have a tenant default.
Okay. Like I said, you know, if I'm wrong, hopefully I'm wrong, then, then I owe you a big, huge apology, so.
Well, I, I will accept it graciously when we're there. But, but, but our, our goal, we're, we're, I, I view my role as a community builder, a developer. I'm, I'm not, you know, one, and if I'm getting off on a tangent, I apologize, but I think you need some context here. We're responsible for the built environment. It doesn't get done by anyone else. Other than the institutional stuff, you know, the fire stations and the schools and, and the hospitals. It gets built by people like me, and we're the ones who take a risk. We have a vision. We go out and try and build something. We build the built environment. And I'm trying to do something here, again, that's a gateway for this community that you will be proud of, that I will be proud of. I, I'm the owner. I'm not, you know, representing someone from New York or, or San Francisco. I'm the owner. I'm 20 miles, not even 20 miles, 10 miles down the street. And I have personal liability as it relates to this investment. This is not other people's money. It's mine, and I take pride on.
Well, not all of it, because we created a TIF for you.
But the TIF money is being created by virtue of the investment.
Right.
It wouldn't be there but for that investment.
So you'll get your money back.
I hope so.
Okay.
I really hope so.
All right.
That's why I'm here, so.
And we've been working for about a year looking at this market, and a funny little story. Two nights ago, I was installing a Christmas tree, and you know, where do you go for Christmas lights in Minasha now? I went to Walgreens. They didn't have any. I went over to, I was, I would have went to ShopCo. Do they? Okay. Well, I would have went to ShopCo, and I ended up not buying anything, because, you know, our retail, we do have a huge hole in our retail market here, and I hope that you can help us fill that hole. You're not going to recreate ShopCo, but hopefully we'll be adding to that environment for all of us to have those items that now we have to go out to the mall for or, you know, a seriously far distance, so. I, I think you, you did identify the market. There's a good density of potential customers here, and Starbucks saw that, and I think that's going to be good for all of us in the future. But it also has to look inviting when you get there, and that's what you're working on right now.
Right. And, and you have to remember that you're in competition with every community and village in the state of Wisconsin, and they're all doing this.
Unfortunately, everyone's giving TIF incentives right now.
Well, they, they, they recognize that they're, they're, they're trying to make economic development happen. And it's not here. It's Appleton, it's Oshkosh, it's Sheboygan, it's Font, everyone is doing it. And it's a valuable tool to create high-quality product that we're talking about in this built environment that might not have happened but for this additional marginal level of assistance.
Exactly. I'm Alderman Nichols. Do you have a comment as well?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Youngbacher, for being here this evening and sharing with us the obstacles that you've run into along the way and your willingness to continue to work through them. I think all of us here can at least appreciate that things don't always go as we have planned, but that we can, that we have to remain flexible, or things just won't get done. Mayor, is there any action that needs to be taken on this item this evening?
We do not need to take action this evening. Well, Sam wanted some. Did you want action, Sam?
No, I, I've just been waiting for a good opportunity to jump in to kind of just summarize. So basically, again, I, I think, as Kip and Peter had kind of stated, they are looking at pulling permits this week, hopefully starting by the end of the year. Our next council meeting would be January 6th. At that time, I'm sure staff will work with Peter between now and then to kind of pull together some amended language for the monetization, as Peter had mentioned, and hopefully bring that back at that time. Is that a acceptable timeline? And then I, I would assume at, at that time too, the development as well as CR structures, we'll be able to provide a, a better update of timeline of, okay, now that they're getting into it, what they feel can be a, appropriate timeline if that isn't the 60 days.
Do you have anything else, Peggy?
Yes, if, if the, if no action is required, and if it's all right with the council, I'm perfectly fine moving on with the rest of our agenda this evening.
You okay with that, Steve? Steve has a quick comment, and then we'll.
I, I just wanted to clarify. When I spoke last, I had a lot of ABC blocks going around in my head, trying to organize them. I, I don't have a concern. In fact, I wasn't actually going to say anything tonight, uh, uh, because the, the delay didn't bother me. You know, you gave a good explanation and all that. It was when you brought up the revisiting the TIF agreement is what I, is what my main concern is, and the reason is that is because it always seems like when a developer comes back to try to renegotiate a, any type of agreement, it's always for the betterment of the developer, not the city. But the mayor also explained that it's got to be beneficial to both parties, which, which I'm, uh, which I'm, I'm good with. It's just, I don't want to see this go in a direction that others have gone, where they keep coming up before the council to redo an agreement and redo an agreement, because. because this is happening and that is happening. And my main comment was, please make sure this is the only snafu that hopefully this will, you know, where, where you're not constantly coming back and running into the situation where it's always coming before the council again to redo this, uh, on the agreement or that because something's happening that, uh, you didn't...
The, the amendment to the TIF is what I would call a, a result of an inter-creditor agreement. And I think Pamela would understand. We have a bank, we have the city's interest under the TIF. And they, it's, it's like two pieces of software they need to talk to each other. And right now, it, they're not, they, they don't quite communicate because they have a gap in some of the language. These aren't financial terms. They're really very technical legal terms dealing with an inter-creditor agreement between those parties. So we're not, we're not, I'm not here amending any of the, the, or making a request to amend any of the financial constructs of our deal. It's really a very, uh, uh, wonkish part of the relationship between creditors, my bank and the city that has to have a merger of some language that, that, that we hope we can steal from Appleton and suggest that this is language that works.
Yeah, no, I just wanted you to understand that.
If that's what you were thinking, then I could appreciate the, the concern.
Right. So if it came across a little bit differently, that's not the way I meant it. It's just, I just wanted to avoid any time to hear anybody say they want to renegotiate or bring back amendments. That's the first thing that pops in my head.
I'm not talking about financial terms. I'm talking about what, what I would classify as inter-creditor agreement language that deals between, deals with the relationship between, uh, the city and, and our lender as it relates to this agreement. It has nothing to do with the amount of the TIF, the term of the TIF, uh, the amount of the, uh, increment that's created, all that stuff. Not, none of that.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to...
Thank you very much. I know we've probably stretched this out a bit longer than you had hoped, but, uh, I, I think it was a worthwhile conversation. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. We're going to move on to public comments and there's no one in the public that still is here. So... So if I would accept a motion to adjourn by Alderman Taylor, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.